Counselor Tigan.
Present.
Counselor Nishiyoka.
Present.
Counselor Matthews.
Here.
Counselor Gwynn.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Varney.
Here.
Mayor Julie Hoy.
Here. Counselor Matthews, will you please lead the pledge?
I move for approval of the special agenda for tonight, Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Tigan.
Aye.
Counselor Nishiyoka.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Gwynn.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Varney.
Aye.
Mayor Julie Hoy.
Aye. Do we have any additions or deletions tonight?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Then we are on to discussion about the airport master plan update.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Brian Martin, Public Works Director. I'm just going to say a few brief words and turn it over to John Pascal, our Airport Manager. First of all, there's no decision that you need to make tonight. We're going to be presenting a lot of information regarding the master plan update. This information and what's going to come out of this master plan will have long-term financial implications depending on choices that we make later this year. The choice does not need to be made tonight. We would like, you know, feedback and we'd like to help answer questions and have some discussions so we can kind of get a feel for what you're thinking when you see this information. But we will be back later this summer or fall for our recommendations. So anyway, I just wanted to kick off by letting you know that.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor and Council, John Pascal, Airport Manager. Along with our colleagues and partners from Mead and Hunt, the airport's aviation consultants, tonight we'll be revisiting the ongoing master planning effort and providing information and seeking feedback from council as we restart the master planning process. The end goal is to have the master plan wrapped up and submitted to FAA later this year. And to do so will require some challenging financial and airport development decisions from city council, particularly around future airfield layout and associated infrastructure, meaning runways and taxiways primarily. By way of background, since so many of you are new to this effort, an airport master plan, it's a robust twenty-year planning and development document that contains several chapters, among which are the aviation activity forecasting, future facility requirements and development alternatives, which are derived from the aviation forecasts, and the airport layout plan, which is the final planning and development document agreed to and approved by both the FAA and the City of Salem, which will happen at the end of this process. Tonight is the next step in a multi-step public process that began in two thousand and twenty-one and will continue throughout two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand and twenty-one, we held the city council workshop to share feedback and concerns that the FAA communicated to the city in two thousand and nineteen regarding its long-term airfield layout and financial self-sufficiency goals. FAA subsequently moved federal funding for this project forward from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-two to allow the city to undertake the master plan update sooner than we had anticipated. Planning effort did kick off in two thousand and twenty-two but was then paused due to reintroduction of commercial air service, which of course has a major impact on airport, long-term airport planning. With a full year of commercial air service now in the books, the FAA earlier this month approved the aviation forecast chapter, and staff and consultants are now prepared to restart the master planning process. Tonight's presentation will cover several topics for council consideration, including taxiway reconstruction and realignment, runway considerations, developable property, and the financial impacts to those long-term decisions. With that, I'll introduce Kevin Mulcaster and Ryan Bergstrom with Mead and Hunt, the airport's aviation consultants. Kevin is Mead and Hunt's Senior Aviation Planner and was the project planner for the airport's current master plan, which we completed in two thousand and twelve. Ryan Bergstrom is Mead and Hunt's Senior Airport Engineer and has been the project manager on every capital improvement project at Salem Airport since two thousand and thirteen. With that, I'll let Kevin kick off the presentation and then we'll go from there.
Great, thank you, John. Good evening. Oh, thank you. There we go. All right. Good evening. Thank you for the introduction and just wanted to take a second to introduce myself a little bit further. So my name is Kevin Mulcaster. I work for a company called Mead and Hunt. We've been working with the airport since two thousand and five on a variety of different projects from engineering, architecture, environmental, planning for a number of years. I started working at this airport. My first trip to the Salem Airport was in two thousand and five as a part of the Oregon Aviation System Plan. Was able to meet the previous director and then begin work with John in the early, I guess, early two thousands, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven timeframe on the environmental assessment for the runway extension at that time. And as John mentioned, I was also the project manager for the previous two thousand and twelve airport master plan. Twenty-six years in the industry, twenty of them have been with Mead and Hunt, and I'm here tonight with my colleague Ryan Bergstrom. As John mentioned, he's a project manager here for the Salem Airport, but also is recognized within our company as a regional practice leader, which means he's an expert on all things FAA design standards and is a resource for us throughout the country. Just real quick, just to give some context about where we work and just give you some examples here. We're working coast to coast at airports, big and small, from small general aviation airports to some of the largest airports in the nation. I just wanted to provide that context before we dove into the conversation tonight. So really, our agenda for this evening is to give you an update on where we're at in the master plan. John mentioned a couple of the drivers that are important to this master plan, which we'll talk about in detail, and then also how the plans evolved since the introduction of, or reintroduction of, commercial air service in two thousand and twenty-three. The primary focus of our conversation tonight will be on the taxiway A or Alpha infrastructure, as well as the runway sixteen thirty-four alternatives, and we've got two to present to you tonight. And then just wanted also make sure that there was a clear understanding of what our intended public engagement will be throughout the master plan and then review our schedule and next steps. So before we get started, I just wanted to give everybody just a brief orientation so we can talk the same language or try to tonight. Aviation is filled with acronyms and it's easy for me to start speaking that way and just wanted to make sure I set the table a little bit here before we get started. So this is an aerial photograph that's looking south, and you can see the passenger terminal there to the west. The Army National Guard to the east, as well as Garmin, just to give you some context about where we're looking. We're going to be talking about all of these pieces of infrastructure tonight. So the runway thirteen thirty-one is here, is considered the primary runway, and I will explain what that means in a minute. Sixteen thirty-four is an additional runway that is part of our conversation tonight. Taxiway Alpha is the taxiway that's west of thirteen thirty-one. You can see that it jogs further to the west and then again to the south. That'll be an important part of our discussion this evening, as well as taxiway Foxtrot on the south end, and then Bravo that it parallels thirteen thirty-one on the south end of the airport and then jogs back to the east on the north end. Couple of definition of terms, you know, again, just trying to make sure we're all speaking the common language tonight. We're going to try to remember to slow down when we're giving this presentation, explain some of these terms again further into the discussion. But just wanted to set the table a little bit. So the Airport Improvement Program is the program that the airport receives federal assistance from, both in terms of its annual entitlement, and then when there are larger projects, discretionary funds that can be used to fund those capital improvements. The Airport District Office, we will easily say this a few times, probably the term ADO, but that is the local office that's responsible for administering the AIP or the funding mechanism for airports in the Northwest. Airside, so this is all of the areas that are accessible to aircraft, runways, taxiways, aprons, hangar areas. So pretty much wherever you can move an airplane, that's considered airside. Eligibility will be another important topic tonight, so this is how the FAA determines where they're going to invest their funds. Is it eligible through the Airport Improvement Program or is it ineligible? And so there's a clear definition in their guidance that tells you which types of projects are eligible. An operation is an aircraft takeoff or landing. Terminal area, so that I can, we can, oh, I don't have that up anymore, but the terminal area is really any of the areas that are outside of the airside that are supporting the movement of people through your terminal building. So that can be the area out front of the terminal building where you have circulation roads to the area where the building itself sits. Visual flight rules and instrument flight rules, the definitions are here, but visual flight rule, just think of it as if the weather looks good, pilot can use visual cues to operate their aircraft and doesn't have a need for instrumentation on the ground or in outer space. And then instrument flight rule is kind of the opposite. If it's a low visibility or conditions that require instruments to navigate, then it's considered IFR or instrument flight rules. So we want to dive into the airport master plan and why this particular topic that we're going to talk about tonight is so important. The airport master plan is a fundamental element that the FAA requires to be able to, that must be completed in order to receive federal funding. And so at the end of this master plan, there's going to be a document called an Airport Layout Plan, which is basically the graphical representation of what is in the master plan. And any project that the airport is going to request funding assistance on has to be shown on that airport layout plan. Think of it as a diagram of what the future of the airport is going to look like. So that's number one. We've got to get this done so that we know where we're going and that the FAA knows where the city wants to take the airport and that those projects are identified on that plan so you can be in a position to receive funding. The key issues in this master plan are primarily driven around one piece of infrastructure, which is taxiway Alpha. If you remember where that was on the map, it was the taxiway that was parallel to the primary runway, so thirteen thirty-one on the west side. That pavement is reaching its end of its useful life, and to program funding for either rehabilitation or reconstruction of that, it takes a period of time to get into the FAA's queue and be able to prioritize the funding for the City of Salem. So that's an important piece that's going to need to be decided as a part of this master plan is when that piece of pavement is going to be rehabilitated or reconstructed and where. It's going to be rehabilitated and reconstructed. So the location of taxiway is dependent upon the decision to maintain runway sixteen thirty-four, because that's going to dictate where that taxiway ends up. And we'll talk about this in more detail throughout this presentation, but one of the primary drivers behind this discussion is that runway sixteen thirty-four has been determined to be ineligible, so it cannot receive that federal assistance moving forward. And John mentioned that in his opening remarks, that that decision was made in two thousand and twelve, and we'll talk about that in a second. So really, this whole master plan, you know, really is driving towards determining that future location of taxiway Alpha. And then that will, that decision will impact the future of runway sixteen thirty-four. So the general question, you know, that we're here to introduce to you all tonight, and as Brian and John had mentioned, we're not looking for a decision today. But really, the conversation comes down to, is the city prepared to maintain runway sixteen thirty-four without federal assistance moving into the future? So wanted to spend a minute just to talk about that relationship. I said a bunch of those, tried to explain that a little bit on the previous slide, but I'm going to turn around and look here. But you can see, you can see this taxiway Alpha here is where I'm pointing, and as it jogs back to the west and then crosses over sixteen thirty-four, that is its current alignment. And so the question, the basic question that the FAA is asking of us is, and the City of Salem, to decide as a part of this master plan, is the future of this taxiway in its current location because sixteen thirty-four is going to remain in its current location? Or is the taxiway Alpha going to extend straight and be a true parallel to thirteen thirty-one? This is important because in two thousand and thirty-five, as I mentioned, that taxiway Alpha piece of pavement is nearing its end of its useful life. And that's important because we want to stay ahead of that. We don't want to get to a situation where the pavement's degrading, it becomes a safety issue, and it becomes an issue for aircraft operating on it. So we need to start thinking about that now as a part of this process and then again get into the queue for FAA funding. The location of taxiway is really dependent upon that decision on sixteen thirty-four. So if it stays, taxiway Alpha can remain in its current location and the FAA can invest funds to rehabilitate it or reconstruct it in its current location. Or if sixteen thirty-four, if the city decides that it does not want to maintain sixteen thirty-four, then it would go straight. The point is, the FAA doesn't want to do this project twice. They don't want to get to a place where we make a decision to leave it where it is and ten years goes down and the city is saying, hey, we can't afford this anymore. We're going to go in a different direction, then the FAA is going to come back and have to reinvest. And they've said that very clearly, that they're not going to do that. They want this master plan to be the tool that identifies the future of taxiway Alpha and its long-term alignment. Just check here real quick and make sure I've covered everything. I guess the one thing I would say too is, I guess on this, and we're going to dive deeper into the alternatives, but really, the FAA does not have an issue with keeping the current alignment. They don't have an issue with it being parallel. We can make a good design and we can have, I guess, an FAA compliant airfield in either scenario. So this is a little bit of a preference and choice by the City of Salem in terms of where they want to invest their own funding in the infrastructure of the airport. Okay, so just a couple of definitions. So why is runway sixteen thirty-four ineligible? This is obviously the first question we wanted to be able to chase down. It's important that we take a second to understand this. So the primary runway, you can see the different definitions up here, but I'll read them anyway. Single runway at an airport is eligible for development consistent with FAA design and engineering standards. So runway thirteen thirty-one is the longest, it's the widest, and it's the runway that has the most reliability in all-weather conditions with the instrumentation that exists. So therefore, it is your primary runway. A crosswind runway is recommended only when the wind coverage for a primary runway is less than ninety-five percent. So a simple way to think about that is the winds blowing down that runway ninety-five percent of the time, blowing down thirteen thirty-one, the primary. And so in Salem's case, that wind coverage exceeds ninety-five percent. So therefore, runway sixteen thirty-four does not even qualify as a crosswind runway. So that makes it ineligible from a crosswind standpoint. A secondary runway really is only needed if you have capacity constraints. If you have so many operations that you need an additional runway to handle the level of service or level of traffic that is operated in an airport. And because Salem runway sixteen thirty-four does not qualify as a secondary runway just simply based on the volume of activity that's occurring at the airport. And so that defaults the runway classification to an additional runway, which is the simplest way to say that it's a nice-to-have, but it's not a have-to-have. So John covered this a little bit in the introduction, and I appreciate that. So back in two thousand and twelve, we were finishing up the master plan. At that time, the FAA notified us of the ineligibility determination for runway sixteen thirty-four. In two thousand and nineteen, the question was asked first about taxiway Alpha. What's the long-term plan? Now that the runway is ineligible, what are we doing? How are we going to program this? Where are we going to locate this taxiway for the long term? The, and we talked a little bit about the alignment, and then John mentioned also the request for, from the FAA to move up the master plan because this issue was so critical. So it was fast-tracked. It was originally intended to be initiated this year in two thousand and twenty-five, but ultimately was moved up to two thousand and twenty-two. So in two thousand and two, the airport master plan began. We started having our meetings with our Planning Advisory Committee. We had our first kickoff meeting there, and then we also had a little bit of a curveball for a good reason with the introduction of commercial air service again in two thousand and twenty-three, which then again needed us to kind of take a pause and understand how that was going to impact the completion of the master plan. And really, that was also kind of tied back to pavements, you know, looking at the type of aircraft that was introduced and how that was going to operate on the existing pavements and how that was going to wear over time. Certainly makes this a higher priority and a greater need than maybe it even was just a few years ago. And then certainly also from a terminal planning perspective, looking at what the long-term space needs were going to be for long-term sustained growth in commercial service. Then finally, we have, in two thousand and twenty-four, we continue to make progress, and we've got a slide in here kind of showing the steps in the master plan here in a minute. But we started marching through those steps, and we've really gotten to the place where we've finished our aviation demand or future demand of what we think activity and employments are going to look like in the future. And we've identified what the facility needs are based on that demand, and now we're at a decision point where we need to understand which direction the City of Salem would like to take on this taxiway Alpha, which is going to drive what the future alternatives are going to be for the airport. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along here. So I just mentioned that, you know, kind of here's a snapshot of where we've been and where we're going and where we're at. And so this is kind of that decision point that I mentioned a second ago. So we'll get into the meat of the presentation now, just in terms of the two different alternatives and kind of the advantages and disadvantages of both. First, just to help set the stage a little bit more, so the terminal area constraints, again, with the Velo's launch in two thousand and twenty-three and a fantastic first year of service. The way that we're looking at this from a master planning standpoint is long-term sustained success and growth of commercial service and what facilities would need to be in place to accommodate that growth. And you can, this green box that's shaded out here is what I would call the terminal area, the terminal environment. And you can see that there's some constraints there. You've got taxiway Alpha that's cutting through that box. And really, the biggest constraint on the terminal area as it sits today is kind of on the land side. So it's kind of the front of the house to the road is really the biggest constraints. And then we've got the air traffic control tower, which we know is going to be moving across the airfield in the future, and then the Oregon Department of Aviation facilities as well. Those are all some of the constraints that are limiting the possibilities within this area. And so looking at the long-term plan, you know, a benefit of removing taxiway Alpha and putting it in a true parallel to the primary runway is you gain about ten acres of developable property that would be able to support long-term commercial gain about 10 acres of, of developable property that would be able to support long-term commercial So looking at the two different alternatives, we're going to start with alternative one. I think we've got three slides on each alternative here. This is just intended to give you an orientation of what the future would look like if it, if it were to maintain in its current location. And so you can not, not see a lot of changes here. You know, it's, it's basically what the airfield looks like today. There's a, there's a couple of small modifications that need to be made to Alpha towards the south end, but, but generally speaking, it's in the same location and, and, and has the same utilization and, and functionality as it does today. Some of the advantages and disadvantages on the next slide, looking at it from an airside perspective, certainly 1634 is preferred for small general aviation users. There was, actually, I think I breezed over it, but there's a, was a usage percentage on, on one of the, one of the exhibits that we showed, and, and definitely, this is the preferred runway of choice for the general aviation traffic, particularly those that are, that are hangered at the south end of the airport, just due to proximity, number one. And then number two, light aircraft, you know, have a, I guess, a lower tolerance, if you will, for, for a crosswind component, and it just provides an added level of safety for, for those small general aviation users. It maintains the pilot's discretion based on the aircraft for wind, so basically gives them choice to be able to make a decision as a pilot in command to, to use the best runway end that they feel is best for their operation. And then it also maintains the existing taxi times, again, going back to that proximity issue. The disadvantages from the airside is certainly that, that it's not eligible for FAA funding, meaning that any, and any future investment that's needed in the, in runway 1634 would be 100% on the city of Salem to maintain. Looking at the land side, again, maintaining that proximity to the existing, existing hangar development, so there's, there's certainly that advantage. But on the, on the disadvantages side, you're limiting the flexibility to accommodate the short-term and long-term infrastructure needs to support commercial service. So again, looking at, back at that terminal area graphic, you're limiting the, the space that's available to support that, that land side development. And then I, I guess the other one that I would, I would put in here too, that I, I don't have on, on the screen here, but I'm thinking about it as I'm speaking, is, is the, is just limited land side development area for, for revenue generation and, and also future growth of, 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 of general aviation operators. From the community environment standpoint, there's, there's no changes to the aircraft overflight pattern. So again, if you think about the distribution of operations on the, on the airfield, you've got four runway ends now. The primary runway for general aviation aircraft is the, is runway 1634. So you're kind of splitting that overflight around the airport. And, and then I guess on the other side, you know, when we get to the next alternative, you're kind of narrowing that down, and you're limiting it to, that all those operations to just two, two runway ends, so you're going to have an increased level of traffic over some areas. Also, in the community environment, from a disadvantage standpoint, is continuous off-airport management. It's easy to think about maintaining the runway, runway 1634 is just pavement and paint and lights, but it's a lot more than that. There's obstructions and airspace that need to be maintained that are off-airport, so that could include tree clearing, zoning ordinances and zoning limitations in terms of height of structures or, or cell towers. There's just a lot of things that you need to, need to control to be able to make sure that if you choose to invest in runway 1634, that it's going to be usable because the approach and departure procedures are, are clear. And then from a financial resiliency standpoint, the advantages, no cost to close the runway if you don't close it. And then you certainly have no cost to, to realign taxiway Alpha because that piece of pavement is eligible, and it would be rehabilitated, reconstructed in its current, in current location. And then from a disadvantages standpoint, you've got a big one, which is the maintenance of a, maintenance costs or rehabilitation costs would be 100% on the city moving forward. Limiting area for revenue generation, I talked about that a moment ago. That's a, that's, that's definitely a constraint today in terms of, of developable property on the airport to be able to accommodate that projected demand, both in users, but also from a financial resiliency standpoint, and the ability for the airport to generate and maximize its revenue potential. I'm going to hand it over to Ryan for, for a minute to, to talk through the next slide, and, and, and I'll be back up to, to give you the next alternative here.
All right. So before I get going, reading all the numbers, I just want to revisit some of the terms in the columns in this table. Kevin had mentioned some of the definitions. Obviously, as you go from left to right, year and project are pretty self-explanatory. The third column, AIP eligible. Again, what that means is that's, that's your FAA grant, it's your FAA funding. If FAA determines that a project's eligible, this is the, this column here is the amount of money that, that you would receive from the FAA for, for funding of that project. The next column over, we have titled SLE match. That is the match money that goes towards the grant. So for those of you that aren't familiar with how the AIP program works, currently, it's funded at a 90-10 level. 90% is funded by the FAA, 10% is funded by, locally by the city. So when you hear the term pay 10 cents on a dollar, that's what this is right here, is your SLE match. Okay? Eligible, again, self, pretty self-explanatory, I think Kevin has covered that previously, and then the end here, project total. So with the first couple lines, we've identified runway 1331, which again, is the primary runway. And so some of you are probably asking, you know, why is runway 1331 on this slide if we're talking about Alpha and, and 1634? And the reason is because this is your primary runway, and we wanted to recognize that there's costs that are, are going to be required to maintain that runway. And also, coming up in the, in the next 10 or 12 years, there's anticipated to be a rehab project on that runway to keep it, to keep it going. In 2018 was the last time that we did a project on the primary, we did a four-inch milling inlay. So it seems like two, two years ago that we did that, you know, it's 2018, it's been seven, and you look forward, and, and I've got the year here at 2037, that's 19 years. And so at some point, we want to recognize that there's going to, there's going to need to be an investment into that piece of infrastructure. And so that's why we put it up, up top, it's just more of an awareness number. As we move down, we get into the next two lines, kind of cyan-colored cells here, that's taxiway Alpha. Again, Alpha's reaching the end of its useful life. That project is supported by the FAA. The question is, where does it go? Okay? The costs in this, in this table here are certainly the option of, of where it parallels the primary runway on the north end, and then as it gets to the, to the crosswind or to the additional runway 1634, it doglegs. Okay, that was in a, a photo earlier on the presentation. Again, we're maintaining runway 1634, there is an option to, to construct taxiway Alpha and maintain that runway, and that's the cost that we're showing here. Since the master plan does go out 20 years, we did add another line for taxiway Alpha 10 years out for some sort of rehab or maintenance project. Likely in this timeframe, you're looking at 10 years, it's, it's likely a seal coat, crack seal, a painting, things of that nature is what is captured in line number four here. Once we move beyond taxiway Alpha, here's where we get into costs for runway 1634. Again, 20-year, we, we, we put in a line for maintenance, okay? And recognizing that if you keep that runway, there's going to be costs annually. Again, paint, lights, crack seal, that's what's captured in this first line here. We put $25,000 a year over the course of 20 years, that's a half million dollars is what we see as a maintenance investment into 1634, should you keep it. The next line down, Kevin touched a little bit on this with regards to obstruction mitigation. This one's a, a little bit interesting, just because, you know, we've known that the, the south hills in Salem, there's trees on, on, on top of those, and, and certainly, they penetrate the approach. We've known that, we've evaluated that, that was the presentation here in '21, I think, John, that we identified that. Just a little bit of, of background on that, we did a survey in 2016 and identified two clusters of trees that were in the, in the approach of runway 34. Did another survey subsequent in 2019 and identified eight clusters that were in the way just because of tree growth. 2025, we're anticipating that there's going to be 18. We don't know that, we haven't done the survey since, but you can see over time that the trees continue to grow, and there continues to be more and more obstructions or potential obstructions in the approach of, of runway 34. So why we captured this is because if you're going to invest in runway 1334, kind of like Kevin had mentioned, it's kind of foolish not to protect the approach. You have a brand-new runway, but you can't land on it. So we have costs in here in 2035 of 2.5 million. That can be a number of different things. It could be tree topping, it could be tree clearing, it could be avocation easements, a number of different things to help protect that approach. What it all looks like, you know, certainly, we don't know, but that's really what this line is intended to capture. As you move down into the table, the big one here is runway 1634 rehab and reconstruct. You'll see that we've got a, a range of costs. And really, what's happening here is every three years, the, the state puts out a pavement management program that forecasts pavement conditions five and 10 years out. And in 2035, runway 1334, the, the north section of, of runway of, of 1634 is anticipated to fall into a reconstruct category. The south portion of runway 1634 is anticipated to be within a rehab category. So kind of two different, two different scenarios there. So what we did is we said, okay, you know, that, these are all projections, right? It's based on what the pavement looks like today and what it may look like in 10 years down the road. It's, it's, you know, formulas and, but there is, you know, some, some, some room to, to look at, at those numbers and say, okay, does it make more sense to do a rehab, you know, on the full thing, if we're, if we're just not seeing the degradation in the pavement that we anticipated? So what this range is really intended to, to, to do is say, okay, if you, if we get to that point, 2035, and we think that we can get by with just rehabbing the runway, like a milling and inlay type situation is what a rehab would be, you're likely on the low end of this range. In a situation where you're reconstructing runway 1634, it's a full reconstruct, now removing the pavement, removing all the rock, you're getting all the way down to the native, and then rebuilding that pavement section back up. That is very, very expensive. And so if we get into that arena, you'd be on the top end of this range. So again, it's, it's more or less, really don't know what the, what the pavement is going to be and what the fix is going to be 10 years from now. But, you know, we are, from a program perspective, we feel that this range is representative of costs that you, you could expect. And then the last item there, again, just taking it out to 20 years, like we do for the master plan, very similar to taxiway Alpha. Payment's been out there 10 years, you're going to want to put some, some money into that. Again, typically at 10 years, you're looking at a crack seal, paint, maybe a seal coat, things like that. So we've captured a million dollars there in 2045 for a maintenance on 1634. Summarizing, before I hand it back over to Kevin, so in the dark blue on the bottom, we've, we've aligned, basically have the, the two categories. So we've got 1634 and the costs associated with those improvements. You can see that the AIP eligible column and the, and the match column are zeros with 1634, okay? Consistent with what we've been talking about, all the costs fall in this ineligible, okay? You add all the costs up that are in the ineligible column for 1634, and you, and you get this number here. And then next down, the, right below 1634, runway 1331 and taxiway Alpha, again, these are supported by the FAA. They are eligible, they are justified, and so the majority of these costs are in the AIP eligible column. Again, that's 90%, okay? 90 cents on the dollar is in this bucket, and 10 cents on the dollar is, is the match. Yeah, and then totals. So I have another slide that is going to talk about alternative two. I'll turn it back over to Kevin, he'll walk through what that alternative looks like, and then I'll be back up and have a update on the costs.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Dr. Brown has a question?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, are we holding all of our questions until everybody's done? Is that the plan?
Any suggestions? Yeah, I think we should, yeah, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward. Here's alternative two, so this is an overview of what the airfield would look like should 1634 be removed, and a parallel to 1331 added. What's, what's the biggest difference here between these two outside of the airfield infrastructure? If you're looking at, at this pocket eye on the south side, this is a, this area here, and also the area up in the, in the northeast corner, is opened up for development. So it's about 110 acres of land that is currently occupied by runway 1634, that currently cannot generate revenue for the airport. And by removing 1634, you're opening up that land, which provides opportunity to invest in development of that to help generate revenue for the airport. That's a, that's a, a big difference between these two alternatives. It just really unlocks a lot of opportunity and, and variability to the, the overall future development of the airport. So running, running through the advantages and disadvantages, so on the airside, simplifies the airfield geometry. You know, you can see, just looking at that exhibit, the differences between the two, there's less pavement to maintain, there's less intersecting pavements, and it really just puts the airfield in a very simple format that is easy to, easy to plan, easy to engineer, and easy to maintain. It certainly reduces the potential for runway incursions, so just getting an aircraft or a vehicle in the wrong place on the airport by having to make too many turns, and to navigate the, the current infrastructure, so that's an advantage. On the disadvantage side from the air service, certainly recognizing that runway 1634 is their runway of choice, and that, that goes away, certainly, the level of service for those aircraft, not only by choice, but in certain weather operating conditions, their preference would be to have 1634 still available to them. Certainly an increase in, in taxi time, so as you saw on this previous exhibit, I'll, I'll kind of go backwards. You can see most of the hangar development on the airport for the small general aviation aircraft are, are down in the southwest corner, and that runway end 1634 is out their back door right now, and that would mean that they've got a little bit longer taxi time to, to get to the runway environment. Certainly, the redundancy of having, I guess, an advantage of having two runways, if, if there were ever an issue on 1331 that it needed to close for maintenance or, or some other issue, having 1634 available to, to keep the runway, or to keep the airport open and, and airplanes moving is certainly an advantage, so that redundancy is eliminated by the removal of 1634. And then certainly requires that realignment of taxiway Alpha to meet the FAA design standards, so there's an investment there. From the land side perspective, I mentioned that earlier on the overall exhibit, we've got 110 acres of additional land that's available for development, and in the terminal area, you're adding 10 acres. Community environment, I, I'd mentioned this earlier, certainly, this is a pro and a con here, you're reducing overflight in the South Salem Hills by closing of 1634. However, on the flip side of that, you're increasing the overflight because you're, you're consolidating 100% of the operations onto, onto, onto a single runway that, rather than sharing them across four runway ends. And then you have reduced off-airport maintenance as a, as an advantage too, as we, as Ryan just talked about, the, the, the tree studies that have been done and the obstruction removal that would be needing, needed to maintain the approach and departure surfaces for 1634 would be eliminated. Then from a financial resiliency standpoint, looking at the airfield, 100% of the airfield pavements are going to be FAA eligible for, for AIP funding. Certainly, reduction in pavement means a reduction in maintenance costs, and certainly, with the additional land available, just looking at a financial resiliency, greater opportunities for revenue generation. On the disadvantage side for financial resiliency, the cost, you know, there is a cost, and Ryan will talk about that in a second, and what, what it would take to close the runway. Certainly, reconfiguration of the taxiway system to, to get that true parallel in FAA design standards has a cost, and then certainly, the investment that's required to make the 110 acres of land developable and attractive to people to, to, to lease or build on is an investment as well. So I'll turn it back over to Ryan to kind of walk you through the same table.
All right, so a lot of the same items that were on alternative number one are also on this. So the first two, we just brought those forward. That's your runway thirteen, thirty, one cost, again, just, it's an awareness item just to recognize that there is some capital costs that are going to need to be invested into your primary runway. So I'll skip past that. Taxiway alpha, these two lines, there is a slight increase actually in the cost of taxiway alpha under this scenario. And the reason is, is because this, under this layout, taxiway alpha is a true parallel to the primary, which means that there needs to be connections to or from taxiway alpha into your primary runway, connections that don't currently exist. Okay, so there's a little bit of increase in footprint of taxiway alpha because of that. So that's why the cost of taxiway alpha under this scenario is actually a little bit higher. Again, it's supported by the FAA. They just need to know which layout do, does the city want to move forward with. And then the last two items, this is where you'll see a pretty big difference between alternative number one and alternative number two, starting with runway sixteen, thirty, four maintenance. Again, 2035 is where we cut off the annual maintenance for this, for this maintenance. The reason is because at that point, taxiway alpha is getting realigned, it's being a parallel to the primary, and it's at that point that you would actually cross and somewhat bisect runway sixteen, thirty, four. And at that point, you don't need to put any more money into it because it would be closed or it would go away. So we have a quarter million dollars' worth of annual maintenance from today until 2035. Okay, then, again, in 2035 is when we decommission the runway. You'll notice that this is actually in the AIP eligible column. Through discussions with the FAA, they have indicated that would be an eligible item to decommission it. And so what that would look like is removing all the asphalt, some minor grading, top swaling the old runway bed seating, things of that nature. And then, similar to the first alternative, this bottom blue is the same format. When you compare the two slides, and maybe we can do that after the presentation is done, is you'll notice that the AIP eligible and the match are really pretty similar. There's a little bit of difference between the two, but generally speaking, these two are fairly consistent. This is the column right here that is the drastic difference, okay? And you can see, under this scenario, you've got $750,000 worth of investment if you were to close runway sixteen, thirty, four. It's a fraction of what's on the other slide. I think the point that I would like to hammer home here is that, you know, with all these costs, really what to take note of is that any investment into sixteen, thirty, four is funded by the city, it's not eligible. So whether it's $2 million that you invest in that crosswind runway if you keep it, whether it's four, whether it's 10, whether it's 20, none of that is eligible for FAA reimbursement. So I think that's all that I have on this slide here.
Just a couple more slides ago, and we'll be getting to questions here. Just hang in there with us for one more minute. So just to really, just give some context and perspective on single runway airports, just wanted to be able to talk a little bit about what that means. And so up in the upper right-hand corner here, you can see the characteristics and the operations and air carrier operations that are operating here today in Salem and also what are included in the FAA-approved forecast for 2038. And so you can see today, we've got about 3,500 air carrier operations and projecting to go up to 9,200 in 2038. Total operations today are a little over 44,000, and we're looking at a growth of about 10,000, so 54,000 by 2038. We wanted to kind of show you some comparisons of other single runway airports around the country. And so these range from airports very similar to Salem in terms of operations and both in total and in air carrier ops, but then also looking at San Diego International, which is one of the busiest airports in the country, that's able to accommodate a balance between both general aviation and commercial service and sustained growth in commercial service with a single runway. The other thing you will pick up on these aerial photos, if you look closely, and let me get the laser pointer out, but you can see that all of these airports used to be just like yours, where they had a secondary runway or additional runway or a crosswind runway. So you can see New Haven's is here. You're going to give me a test here to see where I'm at here. So in Medford, it was here, and then I need help, Ryan, with San Diego, but I can promise you it's there. But the point is that all of these airports had to make similar decisions that you're having to make as a part of this master plan. And they all have made decisions for the same reasons in terms of being able to accommodate both their near-term and long-term growth and type of activity. New Haven is a great example where they have transitioned, just like you have, to a commercial service airport where they've needed to make space for additional infrastructure. So the point is that it's possible. You're losing some redundancy, but you can still operate a safe airport and accommodate your long-term needs with a single runway. Then just quickly, I'll just go through the next steps. So runway sixteen, thirty, four, you know, Brian had mentioned earlier that, you know, we're at this point of really just sharing information with you, taking your questions, and being able to be in a position to meet with our planning advisory committee that's been assembled for the purposes of the master plan. That committee is made up of stakeholders all throughout the community, both at the airport, the business community, and the public at large. So we'll be sharing this information with them in March. The Airport Advisory Commission, we will be meeting with in March as well. And then our intent is to hold a public open house where this information would also be shared and provide an opportunity for the public to provide input into this process as well. And then we would circle back with the city council to inform them of what we learned through that process and then be seeking a decision at that point. The remaining airport master plan elements, you can see listed below, I won't go through all of these, but, you know, I feel like there's a lot that's listed here on the list, but I guess what I would say is that we're close. I think once we make this decision, we'll be able to move forward rapidly with the remaining elements of the master plan and should be able to have that wrapped up to submit to the FAA in the fall. So with that, we are glad to take your questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. It was a great presentation with a lot of information. Questions, anyone? Dr. Brown, please go ahead.
Unless Sir Paul is going. So I think Ryan said earlier, so sixteen, thirty, four is ineligible for FFA?
Correct, yep, it's ineligible, yep.
So if we get no money, why is this still part of our discussion again? I'm just confused with that, because it's your job to present with all the options.
Yep, what was the, what was your, the second part of the question?
I can take that one, Ryan.
It involves money.
Yeah, the majority of the general aviation folks prefer runway sixteen, thirty, four, so.
Really?
Yes.
And why is that?
It's proximity to their hangars. Can you go back to that?
Yeah, I can.
It's easier to apply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one do you want?
Yeah, while they're doing that, I'll jump in and say that on most days, and today was a perfect example, the winds favor that secondary runway for the smaller aircraft. Every aircraft has what's called the maximum crosswind component. So if the wind's blowing from the side, the smaller your airplane, obviously, the more impact it has. So you really want to line up with the wind as best you can. If you're 30 degrees off on the other runway, it can make that aircraft operation less safe. And so that's the primary driver. The convenience to the facilities in the south end of the airport is certainly there, is a much shorter taxi time, and of course, that's fuel burn, and that's cost when you own an aircraft, so that's some of the desire.
But you all are the experts, correct?
That's what we're told.
That's what we're told.
Look, don't shout away from it now. So if you're the experts, what would you do?
There's a solution for both.
Yeah. And I'll jump in as the airport manager. So I really wear two hats on any given day. There's the airport manager operations hat, which is, it's better to have more infrastructure than less. A perfect example is we had a fatal aircraft accident on runway 1634 about four years ago, and that shut that runway down for a couple of days. Actually, it was almost a week by the time the NTSB did their investigation and we got the wreckage removed, we were able to operate the airport on the remaining infrastructure. If we have one runway, that limits our capability. If we have an accident or we're doing maintenance, it provides less flexibility. So from an operational standpoint, it's nice to have. The other hat I wear is the running of a business, and it's simple business management. It's more expense, it doesn't provide any additional revenue, and it blocks over 110 acres of developable property that could make this airport not only financially self-sufficient but vibrant, well-funded airport. And so, so there's really, you know, I was told once, I'm looking at Dan, he's going to smirk, I was told once I should have been an attorney because I can argue both sides of either, you know, either decision, but what I, you know, what I would do, the answer would be, I would eventually remove that runway and its existing taxiways. I would plan for the long-term development of that property. We could potentially even open up property along 25th Street for commercial industrial development as we move aviation facilities closer to the other runway. So to me, there are more advantages than disadvantages, but I'd have to sit and weigh those, and of course, there's costs associated with all of it, so.
Counselor Tygen, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So on page 19 of your presentation, I just don't know what the term air carrier operations mean or total operations. I divide those things by 365, and they don't equate to anything in my mind. Can you define what an air carrier operation is?
Sure, it's either a scheduled service, so a Velo is a commercial operation, and then there are also other operations at the airport such as charter aircraft that qualify as an air carrier operation. So that number of 3,500 is inclusive of all operations that qualify as an air carrier. So a Velo was, John, what was it, 740 this year?
In 2024, we had just about 500 Velo operations.
Excuse me?
Yeah. So 737 size aircraft.
That's how many landings, like, what's the operation?
Landing or takeoff is an operation. And so, but we also get, we also get charters, we get diversions from Eugene and Redmond and even Portland, and so those all count as air carrier operations when they land at Salem, wait for the fog to burn off, and then take off. We recently flew several charter flights for University of Oregon men's basketball, USC men's basketball flew up here and landed at Salem. So we're seeing more and more air carrier operations, but it's a subset of the total annual operations. We have about 45,000 total annual operations, and roughly less than 10% of those are air carrier.
Okay, yeah, I'm just like, are those, you're saying they're takeoff and landings? Or are there more things that are considered to be operations like taxiing down?
Touch the ground and you take off. That's how the tower, so the air traffic control tower counts operations. So every time an aircraft touches down, they literally have a clicker in the tower and click, and there's air carrier, air taxi, military, and then civilian, which is general aviation. And so they click their clicker depending on the type of aircraft, and that's what they report to the FAA, and that's the forecasting that we use.
And every takeoff, they hit the clicker.
Yep, and then as soon as that aircraft departs, they hit that clicker again. So one landing or one departure is one operation.
Okay. Can I follow up just one other question? So who decides what the primary runway is?
The FAA.
The FAA determines which one of our two runways is the primary?
Correct. For a variety of reasons, Kevin can touch back on that, on the reasons why it is the primary runway and will remain the primary runway. Primarily, it's length, it's longer than the other one, it's wider than the other one, it can accept the largest aircraft that we would have at this airport. It's got the appropriate safety areas, runway protection zones, instrument landing systems, and instrument approach procedures to both runways. The other runway doesn't have those, it's strictly a visual-only runway.
But not traffic? Like the number, our secondary runway, or it's not that, it's called additional runway?
Additional runway.
Gets twice as much traffic than the primary runway?
Correct.
But that doesn't actually have bearing on whether it's the primary or the?
That's correct. The runway 1331 will be the primary runway at this airport.
Last question. Okay, so if we get rid of it, sixteen, thirty, four, and we only have one runway left, then we're eligible for another runway?
No.
Because we would have more than like 60, I'm trying to figure out what?
So a single, I think I know where you're going, a single runway airport is good for approximately 200,000 to 250,000 annual operations. So San Diego is a good example of that, before you hit maximum capacity, before you, so Portland, for instance, has, and Eugene both have parallel runways, so they have capacity, the ability to expand their total number of operations. We have 45,000, so we're at, you know, a quarter of what, maybe 20% of what it would take to maximize our one runway airport. And then, of course, you'd have to have the space for a second runway, and ideally, you wouldn't have intersecting runways, you'd have parallel runways.
Got it.
Which we don't have space for. So we're, you can see in these diagrams, one of the things we didn't touch on is that we're very landlocked here in Salem, we don't have the ability to grow our land outside the fence, just with all the development around Salem. So we have to make the highest and best use and be strategic about the land that we do have and what we want to do with that property.
I'm just kind of stuck on this number of 60% or more of its annual capacity gets you a secondary runway. Like if your primary runway is?
Which slide are you on?
I'm on runway classifications and FAA eligibility.
I think that's the amount of, the percentage of operations, it's not capacity.
Not capacity.
Of all the traffic, you've got 45,000 operations, I believe, out in Salem, so 68% of the 45,000 utilize sixteen, thirty, four.
That's right.
And that's primarily your general aviation.
Correct, yeah, that's not a capacity figure, that's the percent of runways that are chosen by pilots to use.
Okay.
So it's close to 70, 30 on that runway, so you can see it is the runway of choice for general aviation aircraft.
Yeah, that one right there, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Well, mine's actually just kind of on par with what Counselor Tygen was saying, so I guess my question is, on that same logic of if our primary runway was being used at 60%, then we would be eligible for a crosswind, no, sorry, a secondary runway? So I guess my question is, if we were to redistribute traffic just to our primary runway currently and get its usage over 60%, wouldn't that then put us into an area where we were, again, eligible for FAA funds on our, what would then be a secondary runway, but it's currently being considered as additional runway?
So you guys are trying to figure out how to make that the primary?
If I understand your question, Counselor. If I understand your question, you're asking about percent of use of that runway versus the capacity of that runway. So 100% of the use would be on the primary runway because it would be the only one we would have, but if we were at 50,000 operations a year, we would still be only at 20 or 25% of the total capacity of a one runway airport, before you would be eligible to even have a discussion from the FAA about a second runway.
I got you. So the 32% and the 68%, that's our current usage, not our capacity use.
That's correct. That's just really just local choice.
I get that more.
In the 20-year forecast, looking at total annual operations, we, you know, we're breaking into the low 60s at the end of this master plan horizon. So it's, we've got a long way to go before we get to a place where it would be supported by FAA from a capacity standpoint to add or make eligible sixteen, thirty, four.
Yes, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. It anticipated a lot of my questions, so thank you, well done. Under disadvantages for closing runway sixteen, thirty, four, that included increased taxi time for some general aviation users, how much taxi time realistically are we talking about? Because what I'm really going to get at with this and a couple other questions is just how inconvenient would it be for these general aviation? questions is, just how inconvenient would it be for these general aviation users? Would it be, would it disadvantage them to the point that they would just stop, you know, bringing their planes to the airport? Would they just hangar them elsewhere? That's kind of what I'm driving at. So that's, that's what this first question is about.
Yeah, I guess in terms of a of a number of minutes, you know, it's, it's, it's change. And as we all know, change can be difficult. You know, I think the distance that's required to taxiway, or from from the hangar development area to the runway end on the south is is comparable to other airports that have single runways. You know, it's, it's, it's difficult to quantify in terms of time. But certainly, it is a, it is an extended period of time compared to what they have today. But but ultimately, I think it's a, it's also reasonable to think that they could make that movement from where they're currently located.
A matter of minutes, not like an hour.
Correct.
Right. I mean, we've all been in there. It's, it's only so long, right? The other thing which I'm more interested in, how does prioritization work? Bigger the plane gets, the bigger plane gets to land first? Is that the basic rule? I mean, it's because if now all of a sudden, all the little guys, and I do mean actually little, small little planes, I've taken off in those small planes from the Salem Airport. So if now they only have one airport, how are, I assume there, is there like a schedule so they will know, okay, I need to be aware of when I can actually take off from this airport, because Avelo's flight to Vegas, or Avelo's flight to, you know, where where have you is going to suddenly be coming in? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, essentially, the airport, aircraft operations are sequenced by the air traffic control tower. So regardless of how many runways you have, they determine in what sequence aircraft are going to land or depart. So they'll hold aircraft on the ground for landing aircraft, those are the priority. And once the landing aircraft are cleared, then the the aircraft already on the ground are the priority to depart. So it really wouldn't change, there's no prioritization of large aircraft over small aircraft. It's sort of a first come, first served scenario. The only thing I think that Avelo would impact as far as general aviation aircraft would be probably a couple of minute extra wait wait time, just for the, just for the, the large aircraft, wake turbulence to dissipate, so that a smaller aircraft taking off behind it doesn't get caught in that wake turbulence, which which can be dangerous. So but the air traffic control tower manages all that.
Okay, so to make sure I understand, and I'm using layman's terms.
Sure.
Since I'm not a pilot, when something big, like an Avelo plane lands, it lands obviously on the only runway that a big plane can land on. It can't land on the little one. It's too big for that. As soon as it lands, it pulls over. Do you see the terms I'm using?
The taxis to the terminal.
You gotta pull it over. You gotta pull over and park, so people can get out of the airplane and not get hit by an incoming plane. See, this is how I understand it.
It exits the runway.
It's also not incorrect, as far as I understand. So I'm just trying to envision, you know, how how disruptive would this truly be for the small craft and the flight school people? For example, we have, you guys know better than I do, a huge national shortage of aviation employees, not just pilots, but the crew, the technicians, the the mechanics, all there's an enormous shortage. So I want to do what we can to support CTEC, which has a facility out there, and flight schools, so we can get more people to learn how to fly. So how can, you know, what assurances can we have that if, if council recommends closing runway sixteen thirty-four, that we would continue to work well with the, with this, you know, the the general aviation crowd and the flight school people?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that that question doesn't concern me until a point where the airport, if it ever got to a place where the commercial aircraft greatly outpaced the general aviation aircraft, and then these small planes have to have to cycle in, you know, I learned to fly in Oakland, California, underneath San Francisco's Class B airspace. It's very complex airspace, and there are a lot of big airplanes moving around there. So air traffic control does a great job of that. But we're not at that point. And I don't know that Salem's level of commercial service would ever be to the point, I mean, we'd have to have nonstop operations during the day, I think, before it would really impact general aviation. Do you agree?
I agree.
Counselor, Counselor Varney, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. Well, actually, here's, here's one, too. Are you both pilots? I was just curious.
I'm not current, but I, yes, I have my pilot.
Okay, okay. I found, I really appreciated having the comparison to the single runway airports that were in our position years ago. What sort of things did they do to accommodate general aviation? I mean, did they make some particular changes, or some design changes, or something? Are you aware of any?
I, I wouldn't say really from a design standpoint. It's, it really comes down to the facilities that are required to support general aviation. I mean, I think there are some advantages to to closing sixteen thirty-four to general aviation in terms of being able to develop additional hangar, aircraft parking, storage for them into the future. And currently, the airport doesn't have that opportunity, or has very limited opportunity. So I think that's, that's certainly an advantage, even being able to provide, you know, additional service providers, like the fixed-based operator, whether they can expand their services and the offerings they make to general aviation community. So I think there are some advantages as well. In terms of the infrastructure on the airfield, Ryan, I let you comment on this, too, but I don't think there's necessarily anything that these airports did, other than to provide that separation of of use and making sure that, you know, we're trying to provide areas that that are, that we co-locate, like, type of aircraft and operations, so you don't have big aircraft mixed with small aircraft, just to enhance safety. I mean, those types, those are types of considerations that we make all the time as we we develop airport plans. But no, I can't think anything specifically that these airports did that were unique, because they were trying to accommodate both.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, just real quick. I can't speak for San Diego, but I think it kind of goes back to what John was saying, is that when you look at the amount of commercial aircraft, or scheduled commercial aircraft, with regards to general aviation aircraft, it would take quite a bit of of commercial service to really, you know, disrupt that. You know, I learned at a commercial service airport in Fargo, North Dakota, they get, you know, Delta, United. That's where I learned how to fly. And really, the biggest inconvenience I saw as a pilot was I had to extend my downwind, because United was on a three-mile final. And so that would just tower tell you, extend a downwind, and then, you know, you fly a little bit further. That's, that's the inconvenience that I experienced. But yeah, I agree with Kevin. I don't know if there's anything different that that certainly Medford or New Haven did, just because of the the level and the amount of commercial aircraft that's actually happening there. It's not CTEC, and it's not PDX, you know, for example. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I ask one more? Thank you. I'm curious about the visual versus the instrument, whatever flight rules. How, I don't even understand, do the smaller planes just use visual all the time? And would, I mean, how does us looking at different options impact flight rules? I just don't understand where it comes in.
Yeah, so so VFR, visual flight rules is basically you're flying, it's based on visibility, cloud cover, things like that. And so you can see the ground, you can see in the air, you can see other aircraft. IFR instrument flight rules is, it can be pea soup type of flying. It could be a mostly cloudy layer. It's basically, you can't see the ground in in all cases, or you can't see, you know, around the perimeter. And so that's where you're flying instruments. And I have my visual, I'm not an instrument pilot, so I'm just purely visual. But there's certain weather conditions that I'm allowed to fly in, and certain weather conditions that I'm not. So as a visual pilot, I've got to, I've got to be able to see the ground and and be able to see other aircraft as we're flying. With the instruments, you file IFR flight plans, and and you're, you're controlled by air traffic.
Okay, thank you. That that helps. I just didn't understand how they work together.
Yeah, I would add, too, in Salem, particularly this time of year with the rain and the fog that we get, it's, there are a lot of IFR conditions. And so what we'll see on those days is that we'll see business jets and commercial airliners and aircraft that are equipped with the instruments required, and of course, pilots that have the certifications to fly in those conditions. And that's the bulk of what we'll see on those days. We won't see small airplanes. When the sun comes out, the hangar doors come open, and everybody goes and flies to Newport, and flies to Bend, and does all of that VFR flying, because it's, it's nice weather. You can be a certified IFR pilot, but have to fly a VFR aircraft. But you have to be an IFR pilot to fly in poor weather.
Counselor Nishioka, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna, these may sound like very simple questions, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand. So the diagram that you show us with sixteen thirty-four, and then the taxiway next to it, I'm just trying to understand it, the, the image on, I'm not sure, page sixteen, I guess, where you're showing thirteen thirty-one, and it looks like it has a taxiway all the way around it, and then they go off to to each place. So it seems like this has more taxiways? Am I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how the pilots, and whether it's general or others, it appears that thirteen thirty-one actually has more opportunities for them to go in different directions. Am I looking at this map correctly? I'm trying to understand the thing that goes around it, and then these lines that go up.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're right. So, so look, if you, if you were able to remove sixteen thirty-four, you would, this is a FAA compliant taxiway configuration for runway thirteen thirty-one. So it would have a full parallel taxiway on the west side, and a, and a full parallel taxiway on the east side.
Okay.
Correct.
Whereas if you kept the sixteen thirty-four, you would only have one on the west side?
Correct.
And, and though that, the runway gets people closer to where their hangers are right now, but there's not really very good mechanisms to get to the east side, if you're, if you're kind of taxiing around. Again, I'm just, I'm just wanting to, and thirteen thirty-one is longer. It is, it's further out, and we cannot extend either, because of the problems with the distance that, I'm sorry, I wasn't talking in the, the distance that then we interfere, because we're outside of our area. Correct? Or can either of them be extended, if necessary?
Sure. So looking at, I'll go back to the the first graphic here with runway sixteen thirty-four, very limited opportunities to expand this runway and its utilization. It is not only due to the limitations on the airfield, in terms of space to extend in either direction, but also in terms of the terrain and obstructions that surround it.
All right.
So that's a, that's one point. And if you're looking at thirteen thirty-one, certainly, there's a constraint to the north, in terms of being able to extend in that direction very far. I think we can go maybe a couple of hundred feet.
Okay.
But then, looking to the south, there certainly is an opportunity to extend that runway even out to as long as 7,000 feet, if it's needed in the future. Certainly, there's some other issues that come up with that. That's another decision that would have to be made by by the city and the airport, on whether they wanted to pursue that. But it is possible.
But that would be possible in the future if we needed to extend, where the other one doesn't have that. So that's helpful. And then, if I may, the, the availability of acres that would be available to develop, the question I have is, it seems like that land is going to be premium, and that some people that have hangers further out may wish to have opportunities there to build another hangar. And, and has there been any discussion on whether or not those, those areas closer in might need to be rented at a different price? I'm just, different cost? Or I'm just trying to understand what opportunities there might be.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that. That's a great question. We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. But but you're right. In concept, you know, opening up that property for additional hangar development, then, of course, you don't have that long taxi time that we just talked about. So if you build your hangar close to the runway, there's an advantage there. When it comes to appraisals on the value of property and what we charge for various areas, that's a bridge we would have to cross when that time comes. But there is, there's actually even additionally, I would add, there's, I think I mentioned it earlier, that if we move some of the hangers that are further away, that are up against the 25th Street fence line, towards the runway, the remaining runway, that that can potentially open up commercial industrial development for non-aviation revenue along 25th Street, which really is prime property. And that, I could imagine absolutely would be a higher, more valuable piece of land than inside the fence.
Yep, go ahead.
So one more question. We know that we need to get a new tower. And can you show us where that might be?
I can, yeah. And while, while they're showing that, that is an FAA, completely 100% FAA-funded project. They are paying to relocate. The tower is part of the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. We are one of 32 airports in the country that qualified for a new air traffic control tower. It's likely to be about twice as tall as the one we have now. And the chosen location is on the east side of the airport. Kevin will point there, between the National Guard and Garmin. So it'll be midfield of the primary runway. And that's, that's an important piece, because the reason, and one of the reasons the FAA chose that site is that it's midfield on the primary runway. And that's the best visual location for air traffic controllers, for aircraft that are operating on that runway.
So that would be another reason that sixteen thirty-four would not be the ideal one to keep in a?
Correct. And in fact, in the, in the sighting process, there's some difficulty with the tower moving there. Line of sight from the tower on the second runway, the other runway, becomes problematic, particularly on the north end, because you have to look past the National Guard buildings to see the approach over there. So relocating the tower isn't ideal for one six three four, but it's much more ideal for one three three one. If Kevin can point to where the current tower is now, you'll see how far away it is from the primary runway.
Yeah.
It would be ideal to have it in midfield and closer, to be able to be seen.
All right. I'll let my fellow counselors ask.
If I could, too, I might just, Kevin, can you go back to the very first diagram, the very, the cover page? As we're talking about taxiways, you asked the question, Counselor, about simple taxiway layouts. And then, Kevin, I identified here, we have two straight parallels with some, what we call high-speed connector taxiways. If you look at the current airfield, one of the problems we have in this airport, just generally, is that we have this very complex, geometrically wonky airfield layout. Not only is it unsafe, we end up, for instance, we end up with pilots that land on one three three one and turn down the other runway, thinking it's a taxiway. Even though we have markings and signage out there, it happens all the time. It's a runway safety issue. And then, just for aircraft navigating around this airport, because of the way the taxiways are laid out currently, it really is just a mess. It's very difficult to to manage and maintain and to get, you see, for instance, Kevin, if you can point at Alpha One there, you'll notice Alpha One isn't even connected to the end of the runway. It's offset by about 200 feet. So there's just a lot of things, a lot of geometry issues on this airport. The FAA wants us to correct, but they're difficult to correct until we know what the runway situation is going to be like. You don't want to build it in the wrong place a second time.
Thank you. I have Counselor Quinn and Counselor Brown. But first, if I may, to Counselor Nishioka's question about the property on the bad end, I can't remember which direction it is, south end, that, isn't that land also already prepped for building? There's like electrical, from what I remember from the tour, it's kind of ready to roll?
On the far south end of the airport, you know, the corporate hangar area that we've got already started, you know, we have a few hangers out there now. There is some property out there that does have infrastructure built in. The URA, the Fairview Urban Renewal Area, paid for some infrastructure improvements back around 2007, 2008. So that serves that area. Inside the airport, further inside the airport, where the current runway is now, the one six three four runway, there is some infrastructure out there. But so, for instance, stormwater is all over the airport, but we would have to add, you know, sewer and power and some of those to serve new hangers and new businesses. So that goes to some of the costs that that Kevin mentioned to develop that property. It's not just close the runway and then build. It takes some, you know, some site development cost.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Counselor Quinn, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think my questions are for you guys. I think they're probably for, for staff. As far as development potential on that 110 acres, would that be something that that SEDCor would be involved with, to bring in new business, or any?
Generally, it should be aviation-related. Generally, it should be aviation-related. I think they could potentially help with that, but I'm not 100% sure.
They helped bring in the other, didn't they? The, did they help bring in the people from Aurora or no? For some reason, I thought they did.
Oh, they were, there we go. They were involved in helping relocate metal innovations from Aurora Airport. Yes.
Yeah, that's why I asked. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Okay. So, and this is a completely different direction, and some of my questions were answered by, when other folks asked questions, but there was increased overflight for northeast of the airport. So nobody likes change, right? We get emails occasionally from a gentleman who's talking about on the south side and the noise level. So what areas northeast would primarily be impacted, I guess?
I'm thinking primarily the areas around, there's a residential neighborhood that's off of Mission around, say, 23rd, 21st Street. They get a lot of noise as it is now because they're so closely, there's such close proximity to the primary runway. So the 68% or so of the traffic that's on the other runway now that maybe doesn't impact those neighborhoods would be moved over to the primary, and so they would likely experience more noise on the north end. The advantage being on the south end, if we could see further south, there really isn't any development or obstruction issue south of the airport. It's farmland and it's out towards Turner and out that way. So it's less impact out there, more on the neighborhoods to the north, northeast of the airport. But then again, less in the South Salem Hills and the rising terrain out there, which of course makes aircraft see, seem and sound louder. When they're at a 1,200-foot altitude on a 400-foot hill, they're only separated by 800 feet.
Right.
Right? And so there's, it's perceived noise and actual noise are real things when you're up at altitude, and so there's pros and cons to every decision.
And we already have an airport advisory group, right?
We do.
So what, how do those folks feel about the potential changes? Because even though we haven't had like an official meeting, I'm sure they know this has been discussed.
Yeah, the Airport Advisory Commission is composed primarily of pilots and primarily of general aviation pilots, although we do have an Alaska Airlines 737 pilot that sits on our AAC. So they understand, you know, the implications of what we're talking about. And again, from an operational perspective, everybody loves that runway and they like to keep that runway for the variety of reasons we talked about. They also understand the financial impact, the inability to develop more land, to make the airport more self-sufficient. So I think they kind of, speaking for them here, they see it the same way I see it, depending on which hat I'm wearing. It's a business hat and there's the operational hat. So we haven't gotten into really that level of discussion yet, but representing the pilot community, of course, they're in favor of preserving that runway for the long term without knowing where the money would come from.
Well, and I was going to say, we always like those federal dollars, right? So it's hard to just discount that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Brown, did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. So, and it involves money. And actually, thank you, Counselor Gwynn, because you kind of kicked it off. So the 110 acres, 110, we haven't started discussing about what that could possibly look like, right? That could be down the road, but that money would benefit us.
That is correct. Federal law requires that all revenue generated on the airport has to be used on the airport.
So that's a plus. And I think Ryan said this earlier, and tell me if I'm wrong about this, Ryan. So you had mentioned to us, I think it's on page 15, that in the next, what, 15 years, we're going to be spending anywhere from like 10 million to 20 million just for rehab and reconstruction?
Yeah, those are program costs. It's, you know, what, if you're asking me what the plan for, that's the number that I would give you.
And that's a pretty steep amount.
It is.
Which means we would have to be making that money, correct? I want to make sure I got this right.
That's correct. It's 100% city-funded, so other than other grant opportunities to offset some of that, the rest of it would be somehow funded by the city of Salem.
So maybe at our next meeting, if it is possible, is there a way that we can project how much we can make versus how much we'd have to spend? Because that's a lot of money right here just for maintenance-wise. And we would have to bring in a whole, we had to bring in millions of dollars just to break even, wouldn't we?
Yes. And the flip side of that is that if you can develop that 110 acres, by the time you subtract out your taxiways and unleaseable areas, you know, even today, the airport's revenue sources are still 90-plus percent long-term land leases. That is the bulk and the meat and potatoes of where our revenue comes from. So we can certainly do some financial analysis, make some estimations on developable property at certain cents per square feet and come up with a revenue figure to pair against this straight expense figure. And that's the rub right there. It's 100% expense and cost with no additional revenue versus additional revenue and then minimizing costs.
Yeah.
It's a pretty simple business decision, but it's not my business decision to make. It's the city of Salem's, because we thought you didn't have enough difficult business decisions to make already.
No, we don't. Yeah, we don't have any, don't have any. And one final thing, I think it's for you, Ryan, maybe. So you had mentioned to us earlier about, I think it was the match money, right? The match money, and you had said it's a 90/10.
Yep.
With that cost analysis, will you be able to find out for us like how much money we could get match-wise? Is that a possibility?
For the development?
Mm-hmm. Or am I asking too much? I'm just curious.
Well, it would have to be, the development would have to be eligible for AIP funding.
Yeah.
Right? So I guess I would have to try to think of how to answer that one.
If I'm understanding your question, Counselor, are you talking about the development costs that it would take to make the property developable to generate revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, we'll have, you know, that'd be, that'd be a separate financial analysis that we would have to do.
Okay.
And generally, those are not AIP-eligible because they generate revenue.
Really?
The FAA does not fund projects that generate revenue.
Because they won't keep the money to themselves. Well, that's a good business model. No, Madam Mayor, I'm good.
Thank you. Director Martin, did you have something to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add, from the financial perspective, we looked at five-year forecasts, five-year forecasts a couple months ago. I don't think we spent much time on the airport fund because the general fund was a much bigger, you know, forecast to look at, but the airport fund is going the wrong direction also, just like the other funds are. So, and when we look at that airport fund, it's actually very small. It's, I think the annual, the annual fund itself is maybe $2 million. So it's a small fund, and it is going the wrong direction. And so when you look at, you know, whatever was 12 to 20 million, that is money we don't have, and I don't know how we generate it. I'm not aware of a way to generate it under the current conditions.
And one final thing, as we think about how to generate it, like I love the idea of you showing us, I think it was like San Diego, that airport. Realistically, it'd be great if we could be the next San Diego, but I don't know how to make that happen.
That's a great question. I actually spent some time with Mark and Brian about a month or so ago. We looked at New Haven particularly because New Haven is very much the same layout and the same size as Salem. In fact, their primary runway is 200 feet shorter than ours, and they have, they fly, Avelo and Breeze Airways fly 39 destinations out of that airport today, just in this last three years. But I looked back at their second runway, when they closed that second runway, and you could see back in time that it just was dying a natural death. The pavement was just deteriorating until a point that it was no longer usable, then they closed it. But one section of it right now has actually been turned into revenue generating. It's their expanded parking lot for their growth in their commercial service. So they took an expense and turned it straight into revenue. And so, and this is only over a three-year period. Avelo and Breeze have only been airline since 2021.
So we could be the next New Haven?
We could very well be the next New Haven in the Pacific Northwest. That actually is our goal, to have a Northwest presence like New Haven has in the Northeast.
I like that. Good thinking.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'd rather be San Diego.
I'd rather have their weather.
First, actually, we had Counselor Matthews. Go ahead.
I was going to ask, so all of this sounds to me, at least, very much like removing 1634 seems like the better option from everything I've seen. My biggest concern is just the fact of the safety aspect for general aviation and their landing. However, I know that, or my understanding is, is that general aviation pilots, especially since most of them are visual-based, they also utilize the water tower there that's on the property right off Battle Creek, which was just approved for development. So I'm assuming that water tower is no longer going to be part of that structure to be able to actually use, be used as part of a safe landing approach. And so knowing that's the case, will that decrease the, even if we kept 1634, would it make it a less of attractive landing zone anyway?
So the water tower has just been a pre-existing, I think for many decades it's been there, and it's a great visual for some pilots and some aircraft to know when they need to start turning base and turning final. But keeping in mind that that's only certain aircraft, the larger the aircraft, the further out they are to swing around to land at the airport. So a 737 is much further out than a Stinson, which was probably using, and I know Hannah brought that up in the council meeting recently. So there are a lot of landmarks out there that are used, and particularly with like Costco being built out in that way, there's a lot of landmarks that, for visual pilots are there. So whether the water tower remains or doesn't remain, pilots will find another landmark. I know when we were learning to fly, that's exactly what you do, is find your landmarks and turn at those points. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think my biggest question was just with that development and everything else and that landmark being gone, would it reduce the appeal to that actual runway anyway? And so...
I think, you know, generally, and so back in 2012, the Airport Advisory Commission sent a three-page letter to council trying to press for land use to not have residential being built down that hillside to where it comes up to the Fairview URA. Any residential around an airport is problematic, and so the more housing we build along there, the more noise impacts there are going to be for aircraft. Even if we had a one-runway airport, at some point, they're going to head downwind and swing around to land one direction or the other. So more houses is not great at airports. The FAA really tries to keep residential development in particular far away from airports, really for the quality of life issues. So it's going to be an issue no matter what, but yes, I think that runway, the 1634 runway is more problematic for the residential development that's happening up on that hillside as it's creeping its way down.
Counselor Nishioka, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you very much. So this question kind of gets back to people that are, have businesses and things out at the airport, and I'm curious, for those that sell gas to flyers or have some sort of service that they provide, how will this, if we keep the 1331, will it impact where they are? Would they, might have to consider relocating, or would it mean that somebody'd have to drive, you know, taxi further to get to them? I'm just curious how it might affect some of the businesses out there.
I wouldn't think so, just because they are where they are. Certainly, as we, if we have the opportunity to develop property and we can relocate, or those businesses choose to relocate closer to the runway, because, you know, location, 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 that might benefit those businesses. But depending on where they are on the airfield, you know, we haven't talked much about the north end. There's not as many hangars to the north end, but there is a major MRO, maintenance repair operation, that moved down from Aurora. They're on the north end of the airport. So if you're landing on the primary runway, it's a very short taxi to the north side of the airport. But now, if you're a north hangar owner and you have to taxi to the south, then because of the winds, it's going to be a much longer taxi. So it's really just location-dependent on where you need to go, where you landed, where you have to depart. You know, landings are in the same direction as takeoff, so it might be a longer taxi to take off, but it might be a very short taxi once you land. So it's just location-dependent and weather-dependent.
Thank you.
Counselor Tigan?
Thank you. I wanted to pick up where Counselor Gwynn left out, and this is mostly back of the napkin math, so apologize. Back on page 19, looking at the total operations. So if in 2024, there were 44,000-some total operations, by my calculation, 120 a day, and these are all pretty rough averages, and if 70% of those operations are landing on the runway, we're going to close, that means right now, maybe there's only about 30, 36 operations a day on 1331. Do you think, does that feel like about right?
It's probably good back of the napkin math.
Okay. I'll just, on behalf of the folks who live in northeast Salem, that 1331 goes over, if you were to extend 1331 all the way into the Grant neighborhood, it'd go right over my house. So I'm personally aware of this, the increase in traffic from the folks at Avelo and things like that. But what would we be going to by 2038 in this forecast is about 30 flights a day over the northeast part of the city to 150 flights a day over the northeast part of the city. Now, I know some of them are going to go south to Turner, and love it when they go south to Turner. But I think just as a council, we should be aware that that's, like, all of this feels like, I think it's probably the right decision, like business-wise, but most people in our city don't use the airport. They just don't. And we'd love for them to use it more, and we'd, it creates a lot of economic benefit, but a lot of people, the only thing, interaction they have with the airport is the sound of flights going over their house or just disrupting their daily life, especially if you're right under the flight. So to me, it's not a reason not to go forward with this. I think that's probably the best decision, but I think we just need to be ready to talk to our residents across the city that the, there's going to be a disproportionate impact, is the words we use to describe it, to a certain part of the town made by this decision. And that disproportionate impact is going to fall on northeast Salem, where it usually does. So just want to say that in the record today, and we should be ready to face that when it comes about.
That was very good back of the napkin math, sir. Thanks for bringing that forward. Counselor Brown?
I want to follow him, not that I live in that part of the town, because we all know that I don't. But as we think about how much money we could potentially make, at the same time, we also got to think about the folks that we're going to inconvenience when it comes with the noise. I'll take a deep breath with that one. Do we have a game plan if we have to say we're going to close one? Like, at what point do we need to have a conversation with the folks that live in that part of the city?
I would recommend, as we go through the rest of this master planning process, we have several planning advisory committee meetings, open houses. I know in the last time, the neighbors were very vocal with aircraft flying over their house, and there's some historic homes with some single-pane windows, and so they're very acutely aware of the noise. And so we certainly would want them, because part of the public process that happens in a master plan, it's not just feedback from the neighbors for the benefit of the council. The FAA wants to know, wants these comments as well. They get the same comments. And so if there's a disproportionate noise impact over a certain neighborhood or a certain area, historic neighborhoods, the FAA is aware of those things. There are potentially grant dollars available to, and I'm going to use the wrong terms, Kevin, but we can do noise studies, and then there's grant dollars available to noise, I will say, noise-proof.
150, yeah. Noise mitigation.
Noise mitigation in certain neighborhoods or certain types of homes and so. But we would want those folks to be included and involved and engaged during the rest of this year as we go through this public process so that they have, say, in the process.
Right. And that's something the FAA would run, like, they don't need our help to run those meetings. They would, you'd be a part of that, I'm assuming.
Yeah, FAA doesn't participate in the public open houses so much. I mean, they're welcome to, they're invited, but we actually put those on. We typically have them at the terminal. If it's a big enough venue, we may move it over to, you know, one of our other buildings. But we, but all the feedback goes to the FAA and the final document.
I think one of the other points that I would make is that although we're asking, you know, this master plan process to answer this question, as Ryan kind of laid out, the appropriate time to make the change in the infrastructure is a decade away. And through this process, you know, that we're working on now in the master plan, it's not going to end, and there's no further opportunity for the public to engage in this issue as it moves forward. I think there'll be ample opportunity to understand, you know, if this decision is made to remove 1634, to be engaged in the planning. is made to remove 1634, to be engaged in, in the planning, the environmental, the design, the construction, all the way through when the implementation occurs. But, but we've got a decade in front of us to, to get to that point.
Just throwing this out there, for the people who live in that neighborhood, and let's say they'll be impacted greatly, more so than I would, does that lower the, the price of their homes?
I, I, I can't answer that question. I'm not a, a property appraiser. But, you know, I guess what I would say, you know, it, to me, looking at this, I, I agree 100% with what you're saying. You know, you're, there's gonna be an increase in frequency in overflight in those areas. The, the issue that I see, or the, the contrast, I think, from where the FAA is looking at this, is that it's, you know, in, in terms of their thresholds of significance, in terms of where mitigation for noise impacts would be funded by FAA are likely not going to be present. There's, there's contours that will be developed as a part of this master plan that are gonna show and forecast based on the, the future operations, the type of airplanes that are operating, where that noise exposure would be and at what level. And there's certain thresholds that the FAA will, will support mitigation in, inside of those areas, but outside of those areas, it's, it's more of a airport issue and city issue to, you know, generate a, you know, kind of a fly-smart program, which I think Salem has, in terms of just trying to avoid certain areas the best you can, and just be a conscientious flyer rather than just cruising over somebody's house at midnight, so...
Counselor Nordike, did you have something?
I do. I don't think northeast Salem wants us to spend $10 million to save this runway. So if we, I mean, we can't afford to maintain this runway. We can't. I look at the math, nope. I would not vote to dedicate general fund dollars to save this runway. It's too expensive. And I think the neighbors in Counselor Tigan's ward would be upset if he told them, we spent $10 million, just a random number, it could be more, based on your charts, we spent $10 million of that on a runway that you probably don't personally use. I think they would rather see that $10 million invested in their library, their parks, and their first responders, and their Center 50-plus. So when we're talking to the public, we, we have to talk about the trade-offs. And we've already gotten a lot of heat for investing in commercial air service already, and that's a pittance compared to what it would cost to maintain this runway. This is not even in question for me. They mentioned briefly the safety issues of the current configuration, and those should not be underestimated. There's been some horribly tragic news recently about a mid-air collision in the Washington DC area. It killed everybody on both, onboard both aircraft. That's top of mind for me. The, the way that, and I can totally imagine how, you know, your VFR pilot, that's your pilot who, it might be a retiree with a little bit of money and decided to have a personal plane as a hobby. So they're gonna have, they call it the $100 burger, where for fun, on a Bluebird day, they will go fly out to Bend 'cause it's fun. They'll have their lunch, and then they'll fly back, right? Or vice versa. What if it's a Bend pilot who flies into Salem and they see that crazy configuration, and they think that 1634 is a taxi zone, when it's like, no, no, that's actually runway, you need to clear the space? So money, safety, and the final piece is revenue. As you've touched on Counselor Brown and others, there are 110 acres of outstanding revenue-generating opportunities, and that's another thing that the public wants to see us do. That's another thing that they want us to work much harder on. And I would welcome an evaluation and assessment of the properties. So another thing, and I don't know whether this is true, not because I'm not an aviator, but modern-day planes, are they quieter than the ones that are from the 70s still kicking around? I believe they are, 'cause I've been in them. We all know those sounds. But in 10 years' time, there's going to be less of the older planes and more of the newer planes, and they are a little quieter. That's not the same, and I understand that you can still be a quieter plane, but if you still have a lot more of them taking off during the day, it's still going to impact the sound in Counselor Tigan's ward. But again, I would ask those residents, what would you rather have? Would you rather we invest 10-plus million dollars into the things that you've told us are your highest priorities year after year in that survey we send out? Or would you rather we maintain a pilot that benefits a very small percentage of Salem residents at the expense of everything else?
Thank you, Counselor Nordike. Anyone else? Yeah, Counselor Matthews?
I was just gonna, kinda, partially to piggyback on that, and then another question that kind of spurred off of Counselor Tigan, but, so, because this runway is obviously not our primary runway, and not really built for our larger planes like Avelo planes, it'll all be predominantly smaller planes. It will be, will be adding to this, this primary airfield now, right? I mean, which I assume make less noise as a whole on the opposition to Avelo. I use Avelo because that's our largest plane to land here. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
And then secondarily, also, to be kind of also fair on, on the other side, how accurate are these current numbers as far as our landings and everything else? Because it's my understanding that after 5 o'clock, when our tower closes, there's no one there to do that clicker. And so are these kind of based on just projections, or are they actual real numbers?
Actually, reported data, so there are after-hours flights that we can't count, that we don't count. The FAA allows us a 10% add-on, just to assume. One of the things we talked about in the previous meeting is that when we're able to start tracking flights now for landing fees, we'll have 24 hours' worth of data that we can't collect today. And so that, that will help at least hours. It may not be data that's, you know, officially reported to the FAA, but we'll know how many after-hours flights are actually happening in Salem.
Yes, Counselor Nishioke?
Thank you. And to build from there, when we have that software program and they're able to track planes that are coming in, if they are loud, you will be able to know who they were so that you could reach out to them. If the, a complaint comes in that at such, such a time, tower was closed, but there was noise, you'll be able to figure out who that is and then be able to communicate with them.
Correct.
One, two more questions.
Go right ahead.
Will the tower, the new tower, have any expectations to be open longer? Or will there need to be additional hours for the tower? I'm curious about that.
I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I don't, I don't think so. Our tower is what's called a federal contract tower, so it's actually a company that contracts with the FAA to provide those services with FAA oversight. The FAA has to authorize longer hours and more staffing.
Okay.
My guess is, in our current environment, they're not going to expand.
Okay.
Air traffic controllers, unless there's a need. If we had late flights of commercial operators and things like that, then maybe they would extend those out.
Thank you. So my last question is, we've had a lot of discussion about wanting to make sure that our airport is available for emergencies, for getting food in if we're in the middle of something, or getting firefighters here to help with firefighting, or us to be able to get others out to get them somewhere else. I'm just curious, if reducing down to the one runway, does that impact our ability to be able to manage emergencies?
It certainly could. I mean, less infrastructure, again, if you go to the operational side of things, it's always better to have more. We can bring more aircraft in, we have more room to, you know, hold supplies, you know, as they're moving, say, in a Cascadia event, moving from eastern Oregon through Salem out to the coast. But that doesn't mean that we can't do it in a different layout of the airfield either. We, we've got taxiways on either side, as this picture shows, or full parallels on both sides of the runway. We could absolutely close one of those and use that as, you know, the de facto other runway.
Okay. That is really good to know. I was actually trying to understand if we could use the taxiways as a potential runway if necessary, so thank you for clarifying that.
Typically, in emergency situations, really, everything changes in those scenarios, and that's, that's just operational management at that point, emergency management.
Counselor Brown, did you have something?
So, so on the, on that same line of thinking, Avelo, am I saying it right, Avelo?
I believe it's Avelo, but I...
Yeah, that's it.
Not 100%.
And they're currently not here, right?
They are.
They are, so we, they're flying.
They are.
And that's the largest size of airplane we'll have?
I don't know that it's the largest, but it's in the, it's in the category of the largest aircraft that this airport could...
So the reason I'm asking, if, if the aircraft is larger, then obviously we would generate more income, correct?
Potentially.
Potentially, right? Because you have more people.
Potentially, potentially, yes.
And New Haven, what's the largest size of their air, their airplane?
Same, 737s. Avelo Airlines, 737.
So still the same.
Actually, a little bit larger. They fly a lot of 737-800s, whereas we have a 700, so it's a little bit larger, but same class of aircraft. And they do that on a runway that's shorter than our runway.
And so when it comes to emergency, I mean, let's say we just don't change anything, right? Will we still be able to use what we currently have when it comes to emergency services?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have anything? Okay. Well, did you have something? Okay.
Sorry, no.
No, that's okay. Wow, what a wonderful discussion. Thank you very much for the great preparedness, for teaching us all so much about what's going on out there, and thanks for the great questions, everybody. And I'm trying to kill time while we wait for Counselor Tigan to come back, but I think we're okay to adjourn if there's nothing further. Okay? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.